Good afternoon, we're calling the Committee on Education to order. This is Friday, February 4th, 3 o'clock PM in Conference Room 229. Welcome to the Senate Committee on Education. Today is Friday, February 4th, it is 3:00 PM, we are hearing room, in Hearing Room 229. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand video page of the Legislature's website. This Zoom meeting and YouTube livestream event will include the 3 o'clock PM agenda for this Committee on Education. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on Monday, February 7th, 2022, at 3:00 PM, and a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. I'd like to take this time to remind our testifiers that due to time restrictions on our hearings, we will be limiting testimony to one minute per testifier per bill. For people participating remotely, please remain muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. When I call your name, unmute yourself and your time will begin. After your minute is completed, staff will mute you so that we can move this hearing along in an orderly and efficient manner. Should you experience any technical difficulties when it is your turn to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. Your understanding is appreciated and we would like to remind you that the Committee has your written testimony. We apologize if the closed captioning does not accurately transcribe the audio broadcast. If you wish to review the written testimony submitted, please go to the Legislature's website. You will find a link on the status page for the measure. Thank you. Gosh, that takes five minutes. First on the agenda is Senate Bill 2214 relating to digital literacy. This is relating to digital literacy libraries, Board of Education, and State Librarian. To testify, Stacy Aldrich, State Librarian, please.
Aloha Chair Kadani and Vice Chair Kim and esteemed members of the Committee. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in favor of and in support of SB 2214. We appreciate the recognition of the importance that libraries play in the 21st century literacies, that of digital literacy. The current language is very specific and mentions children, families, and the workforce. And we would respectfully like to ask that the language be broadened to include others. Our day-to-day experiences show that K'apuna and also patrons who have disabilities also need support too, and we want to make sure that the language is inclusive. We also know to implement a full-blown program and effectuate this program to support all of our communities and the upcoming statewide digital literacy initiatives, we will respectfully ask for an appropriation that can support a position that can coordinate all of the efforts that are being made and also funding to support contracts that can provide technical support for the patrons that we serve and also their learning in digital literacy. Thank you so much for this opportunity to testify and happy to answer any questions you might have. Mahalo.
Thank you, Stacy. Next to testify, Trevor Abazua, testifying for the Chamber of Commerce. Trevor, please.
Thank you Chair Kadani and Vice Chair Kim, members of the Committee. Trevor Abazua, representing Chamber of Commerce Hawaii. We stand in support of this bill and we understand how digital literacy plays in the modern-day workforce and modern-day education here. And us, by passing this bill, it would put us at a competitive advantage with other states. And, you know, we believe that digital literacy and digital equity throughout the state is vital to a strong economy. So we do support, we asked you to pass this bill and thanks and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Trevor. Next to testify, James Gashill, testifying for National Federation of the Blind of Hawaii. James?
Yes, thank you Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair. I'm James Gashill, I'm testifying on behalf of the National Federation of the Blind of Hawaii. We're fully in support of this bill, we just have a simple amendment in the language to add, along with the other digital literacy services, provided knowledge and use of access technology for individuals with disabilities. This is really one of the big needs in this area and we're concerned that it could get overlooked amid, you know, just general needs. We support the general language, that's for sure, but want to be sure that disability access is specified. And aloha, thank you for hearing our testimony.
Thank you very much, James. Okay, we have written testimony from Selena Lee, also in support. Members, are there any questions of the testifiers? Thank you, and we will decision make on this at the end of the agenda. But James, just to let you know that we hear what you're saying and we're planning to make that amendment. Thank you. Moving on, Senate Bill 2823 relating to education establishes a school psychologist national certification incentive program and appropriates funds. To testify, Interim Superintendent Kei Hayashi, please.
Aloha Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Markado Kim, and members of the Committee. Sean Bacon, interim Assistant Superintendent of the Office of Talent Management, testifying on behalf of Superintendent Hayashi and the Department of Education. The Department stands on its written testimony and supports the intent of Senate Bill 2823. The Department did propose language amendments and looks forward to working with the Legislature to make any refinements to this bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sean. Moving on, Alec Morentic.
Aloha Chair and members of the Committee. My name is Alec Morentic. I'm a school psychologist for the KKT Complex area on Hawaii Island, and I'm Chair of the Legislative Committee for the Hawaii Association of School Psychologists. We support this bill because it would move school psychology. We would like to see school psychologists more at the school level than at the district level. Additionally, this would provide equitable pay and bonus rates for comparable shortage rates that we are currently experiencing. Additionally, it would provide a way for us to establish this because we're currently under Bargaining Unit 13, which does not provide us an avenue to directly negotiate with the Department of Ed. I also stand on my written testimony at this time. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Alec. Next to testify, Dr. Angie Graham.
Aloha Chair Kadani and Senators. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my testimony in support of SB 2823. My name is Dr. Angie Graham. I am the current President of the Hawaii Association of School Psychologists. I am the District School Psychologist for East Hawaii, and I am a parent of two children in the Hawaii Department of Education. I would like to first state that I stand by my submitted written testimony, and I would just like to emphasize that as a supervisor of school psychologists, I have seen how difficult it is to recruit and retain school psychologists in Hawaii. Hawaii is competing with other states and districts who already offer this incentive. As the cost of living in Hawaii is already high, it is hard for many professionals to move here and/or stay here. The bill would be the first step in honoring professionals who work closely with our students and help them thrive socially, emotionally, and academically. The bill does one other important thing. It recognizes years of service, education, and expertise a school psychologist brings to the Department of Education. Mahalo for your time, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's all the speakers we have, although we have 26 written pieces of testimony. Moving on, members, any questions of any of our speakers? Okay, let's move on to item number three. Senate Bill 2818 relating to summer education establishes a position of summer learning coordinator within the Department of Education, makes an appropriation to fund the position of summer learning coordinator. To testify, Superintendent Kei Hayashi, please.
Good afternoon Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Markado Kim, and members of the Committee. I'm Teri Ushijima, Interim Assistant Superintendent with the Department of Education, testifying on behalf of Interim Superintendent Kei Hayashi. We stand on our written testimony and support SB 2818. The Department agrees additional capacity is needed to coordinate all summer programs, and we appreciate the new position to support this work. We would defer to the Department of Human Services in regards to any restrictions placed on federal funds mentioned in the bill that are administered by their department. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on SB 2818, and we are available for questions.
Thank you, Teri. Next to speak, Kathy Betts, Director, Department of Human Services. Kathy?
Good afternoon Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Markado Kim, and members of the Committee. My name is Catherine Cardino, the TANF Program Administrator with DHS, here to testify on behalf of the Department and Director Kathy Betts. The Department stands on its written testimony, offering comments. I will be available to answer questions from the Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Next to testify, Paula Adams, Executive Director, Hawaii After-School Alliance. Paula?
Hi, Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Markado Kim, and members of the Committee. My name is Paula Adams. I am part of the Hawaii After-School Alliance. I'm here to support Senate Bill 2818 related to summer education that will establish a position of summer learning coordinator within the Department. As reflected in my written testimony, summer programs are key to help students reconnect with peers and caring adults, reengage in learning, accelerate the student's social, emotional, academic recovery. This position will help coordinate service, avoiding duplication of effort, promoting equity by replacing the first come, first served recruitment system to target the most impacted and vulnerable students. Better connect parents and students to programs and effectively determine where the gap are in summer opportunities. Thanks for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Paula. Next to testify, Kathleen Alguayer for Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks.
Aloha Chair and Vice Chair and Committee members. Kathleen Alguayer with H Can Speaks. We are in strong support of this bill. You have our written testimony. I just wanted to share that, you know, at the beginning of the pandemic, that first summer when school was out and parents were still going to work, we didn't know what we're going to do with our school-aged kids. The community really worked together with the departments and even with like county officials to try to make sure that kids had a safe place to go, that the programs were still able to function. They, you know, really, the amount of effort that went into this to make sure that families, you know, were going to be able to meet their needs, their children would have their needs met, and support, you know, just at the very beginning of what we now describe as learning laws. I think that if this position had been in place, it would have been a much smoother transition. And so we really hope that you support the measure and pass it out at the Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next to testify, Jeezy Zhong, testifying for CARES, Care After School and Recreation Education Services.
Hey, yes, hello Chair. My name is Hello Chair and the Committee of Education. Hey Senator Kim, my name is Jeezy Zhong, and I have a small after-school arts program here in Kapalama, New York. And I testify in support of the bill, of the legislation. And the language used in the legislation in the purpose goes into social, emotional, learning, and trauma. And I think it would be in the interest of the Legislature to develop summer learning programs by appropriating funds for the summer coordinator so that students can have enriching activities outside of their academic studies. And, you know, they say...
Thank you for your testimony. That concludes our speakers, but we do have 15 written testimonies. Members, questions? I have a question for Kathy Sardino for the Department of Human Services. Kathy, are you there?
Yes, oh yeah.
Yeah, so the programs that we are looking at are, you know, already, they already exist. So does TANF fund support any of these programs now in the DOE?
Yes, we do. Currently, through a contract with DOE, we provide subsidies for the A-plus program for needy families or TANF-eligible families. In addition, we also provide funding through another separate contract to provide the uplink program for middle school and intermediate school students.
And those are the only two programs?
Yes. We do have a third contract, but it's only a pilot project, which we started last year, and it's only with three schools. It's a summer childcare enrichment pilot program to schools here in Oahu and one school on Kauai.
So is there any way to support new programs that are not in the statute that doesn't conflict with the TANF rules?
So long as the summer learning program is not academic, is not towards academic, but more like an enrichment, extracurricular activities as described in our written testimony. If it's for elementary school children, it's probably childcare, and we prefer that it be provided as a subsidy. For middle and high school students, we can provide federal TANF dollars for programs that support pregnancy prevention.
Thank you, Kathy. So would it help for DHS to be able to support this bill if we removed on page three, lines 10 through 12, which requires a learning coordinator to work with DHS to leverage federal funds for school-based summer programs for children?
Yes, we would recommend that we can establish agreements through contract with DOE outside of this measure.
Thank you, because we'd like to work with you to, you know, get more programs up and running. Because do you, does DHS send back TANF money? Or do we use it all? Do we actually have access to more?
Yes, we do have. So when we have monies unspent from the current block grant, it does go into our TANF reserve. So we do have federal monies available. And for, and it can be used for pregnancy prevention programs and services. So for example, after-school or summer programs that support middle and high school students.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that. So we'll be working with you to give further clarification of programs that we can use.
We look forward to it Chair. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Members, any questions? Not moving along. Senate Bill 2182 relating to school gardens establishes a school garden coordinated position within the Department of Education, makes an appropriation to fund the position and related expenses. To testify, Superintendent Hayashi, please.
Good afternoon Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Markado Kim, and members of the Committee. I'm Teri Ushijima, Interim Assistant Superintendent with the Department of Education, testifying on behalf of Interim Superintendent Kei Hayashi. The Hawaii State Department of Education stands on our written testimony in support of SB 2182. The school garden coordinator position is needed to successfully implement Act 175 Session Laws of Hawaii 221, which includes improving student health, developing an educated agricultural workforce, and accelerating garden and farm-based education for public schools. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony on SB 2182, and we are available for questions.
Thank you, Teri. Next to testify, Lydie Bernal for Hawaii Farm to School Hui and Hawaii Public Health Institute.
Thank you. Aloha Maikako, Lydie Bernal, Hawaii Farm to School Hui Coordinator with Hawaii Public Health Institute. We strongly support this bill. School gardens are an amazing way to accelerate student learning, improve student health, and also increase student preference for fruits and vegetables and locally grown and produced foods in Hawaii. So this coordinator and school garden programs in general go really hand-in-hand with the farm-to-school meals that the DOE is also working to expand throughout the Department. We would respectfully request one minor edit to the bill, which is to change out the word "starting" to "developing", and this is on page two, lines 12 and 21. We feel that this would help this effort apply not only to schools that are starting garden programs, but may also have an existing garden program, which many public schools already do. And once again, we strongly support this effort to establish the school garden coordinator within the Hawaii Department of Education. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lydie. Next to testify, Brian Miyamoto for Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Kim, and members of the Committee. Brian Miyamoto is here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Nice to see you. Next to testify, Lauren Zerbo for Hawaii Food Industry Association.
I present Chair.
Thank you. They are in support of the bill. And the last testimony is Kendall Matsuyoshi for Local Food Coalition.
Good afternoon Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Kim, and members of the Committee. Kendall Matsuyoshi on behalf of the Local Food Coalition will stand on our testimony in support of the measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kendall. Members, that concludes the testifiers. We do have 20 written testimonies. Are there any questions, members of our testifiers? If not, moving on to Senate Bill 2816 relating to education grants. Requires the DOE to establish and administer the Strong Students Grant Pilot Program to provide grants for eligible education expenses to eligible students. Requires the DOE to submit progress reports to the Legislature prior to the 2023 and 2024 regular sessions and appropriates funds. To testify, Superintendent Hayashi, please.
Good afternoon again Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Markado, members of the Committee. Teri Ushijima here, Interim Assistant Superintendent with the DOE, testifying on behalf of Superintendent Kei Hayashi. The Hawaii State Department of Education supports the intent of SB 2816 and respectfully provides comments in our testimony. The eligible education expenses defined are duplicative expenses already covered by the Department through federal education grants, and the Strong Student Grant Program would divert a significant amount of resources that could otherwise be equitably allocated by the Department for all students. Thank you for this opportunity to provide testimony on SB 2816.
Thank you, Teri. Next to testify, Kathy Betts, Department of Human Services.
Good afternoon Chair Kadani and Vice Chair Kim. My name is Maureen Bates from the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation within the Department of Human Services, and we stand on this testimony and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next to testify, David Miyashiro, testifying for Hawaii Kids Can.
Aloha Education Committee. I wanted to clarify how this program could work, given our initial pilot on the NAI. Families have indeed struggled to pay for many education needs. They can't get all the things that they need from their schools directly. Online programs like Class Wallet are well-positioned to serve as a digital wallet for families and have been used to administer millions of dollars for similar programs in other states. In our pilot, families have access to a wide range of education vendors within the system, and they use their credits to find the supports that best fit their needs. This has included school supplies, supplemental learning materials, and paying for tutoring services. You can read some parent quotes in our written testimony, but it's clear these families have been incredibly grateful. I know there are many others who deserve and need support. Mahalo.
Thank you, David. That's the end of the testifiers, and we have a total of eight written testimonies. Members, questions of anyone of the testifiers? Okay, moving on. Senate Bill 2826 relating to education establishes a career development success program to provide financial incentives for participating public high schools to encourage students enrolled in grades nine through 12 to enroll in and successfully complete qualified industry credential programs. Establishes a similar program for public charter schools and appropriates funds. To testify, Superintendent Hayashi, please.
Good afternoon again Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Markado Kim, and members of the Committee. Teri Ushijima, testifying on behalf of Interim Superintendent Kei Hayashi. We stand on our written testimony and support SB 2826. The Department appreciates incentive funding for schools whose students attain industry-recognized certificates on the Promising Credentials List. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this measure, and we will stand by for questions.
Thank you, Teri. Next to testify, Director Kathy Betts, Department of Human Services.
Good afternoon Chair Kadani and Vice Chair Kim and members of the Committee. This is Maureen Bates from the Division of Vocational Rehabilitation under the Department of Human Services, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to stand on the Department's testimony and will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Next to testify, Yvonne Lau, Interim Executive Director for Hawaii State Public Charter School Commission.
Good afternoon Chair Kadani, Vice Chair Kim, and members of the Committee. We stand on our written testimony and support, and deeply appreciate the inclusion of our public charter schools in this worthy program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Yvonne. Next to testify, David Miyashiro, testifying for Hawaii Kids Can.
Aloha Education Committee. As Hawaii continues to recover economically from the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic, now is the opportune time to make sure our students are positioned to survive and thrive in Hawaii. Our schools have been incredibly innovative, for example, with an explosion of career academies in our public high schools in recent years. However, the tougher question is how much these programs are actually helping kids not just survive, but thrive. The Promising Credentials Report is powerful and has clearly identified the credentials linked to local jobs that will increase in demand, pay a family-sustaining wage, and have a promising career ladder.
SB 2826 will incentivize schools to be thoughtful and intentional about how their programs are truly setting kids and our state up for success. Mahalo.
Thank you, David. Next to testify, Trevor Arbazua for Chamber of Commerce Hawaii. Trevor, please.
Thank you, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Kim, and members of the committee. Trevor Arbazua, Chamber of Commerce Hawaii. We stand in strong support of this bill and of work-based credentials and career development success programs here in Hawaii. I want to echo what David said in terms of setting up students for success with high-paying jobs right out of school and not having to incur high student debt from going to college and getting a job that they could have learned during their high school years. So really support this bill and excited for it, and thank you for hearing it, committee.
Thank you very much, Trevor. That concludes the testifiers. We had a total of nine written testimonies. Members, any questions? Thank you. Let's move on to the next one. Senate Bill 2184 relating to digital learning. Establishes a digital learning center within the Department of Education, appropriates funds to staff and administers the digital learning centers. To testify, Superintendent Hayashi, please.
Good afternoon, Cherokee Donnie, Vice Chair Makata Kim, and members of the committee. Keith Hayashi, interim Superintendent for the Department of Education. The department supports Senate Bill 3094 and appreciates the appropriation to support virtual learning through the establishment of a digital learning center. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. We are available for questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. This was for Senate Bill 2184. Senate Bill 3094 is the emergency appropriation to the Department of Education for the virtual school. Thank you, Superintendent. Next to testify, Trevor Arbazua, Chamber of Commerce Hawaii, please.
Thank you, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Trevor Arbazua, Chamber of Commerce Hawaii. We stand on our written testimony in support of this bill and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Trevor. Next to testify, James Gashell, testifying for National Federation of the Blind of Hawaii. James, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. James Gashell here, testifying for the National Federation of the Blind of Hawaii. We're fully in support of SB 2184. Going to stand on our written testimony, making the same point that we made on SB 2214 and asking for essentially the same language in an amendment. Aloha.
Aloha. Thank you very much, James. Members, any questions of our testifiers? If not, let us move on to Senate Bill 3094. Making an emergency appropriation to the Department of Education for virtual school. Provides emergency appropriation to the DOE for virtual school and authorizes the Director of Finance to issue general obligation bonds. And to testify, Superintendent Hayashi.
Good afternoon, Cherokee Donnie, Vice Chair Makata Kim, and members of the committee. The department supports Senate Bill 3094 and appreciates the appropriation to support virtual learning. While the department advocates for in-person learning, we do acknowledge that some students thrive in the virtual setting, and a virtual school will enable the department to provide these students with diverse learning experiences based on their strengths, needs, and interests. A virtual school will also reduce the opportunity gap that currently exists between students and increase equity and access to content that may not otherwise be available to them. This includes access to specialized programs such as the Kaipuni Program. Thank you for your support and the opportunity to testify. Mahalo.
Thank you, Superintendent Hayashi. That concludes our testifiers. We had four written testimony and support. And one comment. Members, questions? Okay. Superintendent Hayashi, please. I know that we are still in the early stages, so if this bill is approved, how soon will the department start looking at it? Because we would need to find a site for such a digital center.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, for the question. The department is currently looking at various sites to establish the digital center, and we are starting to narrow them down currently.
Thank you for that. I know it's a large task because we are also looking for sites for teacher housing, which, you know, myself as chair and my vice chair and members of the committee fully support the teacher housing idea, and we've talked about it for a long time, but I think this is the time to get serious. And I appreciate your willingness to help the teachers in need and also the students for this digital learning center, so I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, moving on. Next bill, Senate Bill 2893 relating to a school supply subsidy pilot program. To testify, Superintendent Hayashi, please.
Good afternoon, Cherokee Donnie, Vice Chair Makata Kim, and members of the Senate Committee on Education. Kara Tanamura, interim Assistant Superintendent for the Office of Strategy, Innovation, and Performance, testifying on behalf of interim Superintendent Keith Hayashi, Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony in support of Senate Bill 2893 to establish a one-year school supply subsidy pilot program at Na'alehu Elementary School in the Ka'u Ke'au Pahoa complex area. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony in support of this measure.
Thank you, Kara. Members, questions? If not, moving on.
We've done more than two.
Moving on to Senate Bill 2862. I think it's the other DMK. Relating to education, this bill appropriates funds to the Department of Education to install air conditioning units for public school classrooms that have not yet received air conditioning units. To testify, Osa Tui Jr., HSTA President.
Aloha, Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of HSTA President Osa Tui Jr. We stand on our written testimony in support of Senate Bill 2862, and we appreciate you appropriating funds for this, providing our teachers with air conditioning. We also want to point out that we also hope that you would consider more air purification measures during this COVID pandemic times. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Laverne. Next to testify, Corey Rosenle. Corey Rosenle, not present?
Not present, Chair.
In support, I see Assistant Superintendent Randy Tanaka. Are you testifying on this bill, Randy?
Yes, Senator.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Makata Kim, and members of the committee. Randy Tanaka, Office of Facilities and Operations, testing on behalf of Superintendent Hayashi and the Department of Education. The department supports Senate Bill 2862 and appreciates the appropriation for air conditioning in our school. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Available if you have questions. Aloha.
Thank you, members. Any questions?
I've got a question. Thank you, Chair. Aloha, Assistant Superintendent. I know that in 2016, there is appropriation for $100 million. I guess in the preamble of this, it served, was it, 1,300 public school classrooms? And then the sum for this one would be $40 million to help with over 5,000 classrooms that still need heat abatement measures. It just, you know, I'm just looking at the numbers. I don't know if that's even close to enough money to, if we're going to go with that, how you originally did the, or how the deal you originally appropriated $100 million. How would, is that even enough money? Or is there better use or better ways to do the heat abatement that wasn't originally done?
Senator, from just a quick look backwards, when we initiated, when these projects were initiated, there was a lot that we didn't know about the electrical load, and that's what caused some challenges in terms of getting enough air conditioning by matching the electrical loads. We have a number of very old schools that need to refit. The, it cannot carry the load. And in addition to when COVID came along, we were putting more computers in the classrooms. We were putting air purifiers in the classrooms and box fans, so that exacerbated our problem. And we continue to march forward. We have electrical assessments now for more schools, so we have a better idea. I will tell you that the technology has actually changed quite a bit, where window units are quite effective versus split systems. And the most recent units we looked at addressing the concern of air purification or air filtering. The new units allow us to put a filter into the window units, which really support the magnitude of air filtering. The challenges we have in COVID, we, the recommendation is to open the windows, open doors, get airflow in. And sometimes we're challenged by people keep keeping the AC unit running. We end up air conditioning the state of Hawaii. But now with these new filter systems, we can close the rooms and re-purify the air. So back to the question, is that enough money? I'm hoping my people have done the estimate correctly. We will give it a good go at that budget. But we still have electrical capacity issues. You should also know that this is going to cost us another, best guess is another $3.5 million on our annual electricity expense as we continue to load more AC units into the rooms. But from all the data, we see that a comfortable environment is most welcoming for a good educational experience. So we appreciate your support and continue to march forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Randy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think that concludes our agenda. Members. Oh, yeah, yeah. Can we put to the breakout room? Sorry. Take three. Reconvening the Committee on Education. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass out Senate Bill 2214 with amendments. The amendments will incorporate the amended amendment requests by the state librarian to expand the scope to include all community members, also incorporating the amendment from National Federation of the Blind to explicitly include individuals with disabilities, also including one FTE as requested by the librarian, and a blank appropriation to cover costs and operating expenses for effectuating this program. There are also some technical and non-substantive amendments. Members, questions? Not Chair votes aye?
Chair votes aye on Senate Bill 2214. Vice Chair also with a pass with amendments. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator De La Cruz? Excused? Senator Kanuha?
Aye.
Senator Favela?
Aye.
Madam Chair, four ayes, one excuse. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Moving on. Senate Bill 2823 relating to education establishes a school psychologist national certification incentive program and appropriates funds. Members, we have a little bit more work to do on the language with the DOE as well as the Hawaii Association of School Psychologists. So I'd like to defer decision-making to next week, Friday possibly. So let's move on.
February 9th?
The 11th.
February 11th, Friday, February 11th at 3:00 p.m. In this room, 229. Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2818 relating to summer education. Establishes position of summer learning coordinator within the Department of Education and makes an appropriation to fund the position. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments to amend to remove requirement to coordinate with DHS on federal funds for after-school programs, noting in the committee report that this position should still work with DHS where appropriate. Members, questions? Chair votes aye.
Chair is recommending Senate Bill 2818, pass with amendments. Any member present voting with reservations or in opposition, hearing none. Four members voting aye. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 2182 relating to school gardens establishes a school garden coordinator position within the Department of Education, makes an appropriation to fund the position and related expenses. Recommendation of the Chair is going to be to pass with amendments. We're going to blank out the appropriation of $200,000, but include it in the committee report for the next committee ways and means to consider that amount of funding. On page two, line 12 and 21, to delete the word "starting" and replace it with the word "developing" to provide clarity that the coordinator can also assist with existing school garden programs. Members, questions? If not, Chair votes aye.
Chair, recommendations, Senate Bill 2182, pass with amendments. Any member voting no? Any members voting with reservations, hearing seen, and hearing none? Four members voting aye. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 2816 relating to education grants. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments to amend the adjusted gross income requirement to address the points raised in the Department of Education's testimony regarding family size and equitable prioritization. Number two is technical and non-substantive amendments. Questions? If not, Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 2816, pass with amendments. Any member? Senate Bill 2816, pass with amendments. Any member voting no? Any member voting with reservations, seeing none? Well, five members present, Senator De La Cruz also here. Measures adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 2826 relating to education establishes a career development success program to provide financial incentives for participating public high schools to encourage students enrolled in grades nine through twelve to enroll in and successfully complete qualified industry credential programs. Establishes a similar program for public charter schools and appropriates funds. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments. It would include definitions for advanced door opener, springboard, and foundational credentials as found on the Hawaii Career Pathways website. That is found on page four of the bill. Any questions? Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Senate Bill 2826, recommendation pass with amendments. Any of the members voting with reservations, voting no, hearing none? Five members present, all voting affirmative, recommendation adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 2184 relating to digital learning establishes a digital learning center within the Department of Education, appropriates funds to staff and administer the digital learning center. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass as is. Members, questions? Chair votes aye.
Recommendation, Senate Bill 2184, pass unamended. Any member voting with reservations? Any member voting in opposition, hearing none? Five members voting aye, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to Senate Bill 3094, making an emergency appropriation to the Department of Education for a virtual school. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments that are technical and non-substantive. Members, questions? If not, Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye on Senate Bill 3094, recommendation pass with amendments. Any no votes, any reservations, hearing none? Five members will voting affirmative, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Senate Bill 2893 relating to a school supply subsidy pilot program. Establishes a one-year school supply subsidy pilot program at Na'alehu Elementary School. Repeals, appropriates funds, repeals on 1/1/2024. Members, the recommendation of the Chair is going to be passed with amendments. The amending the scope of the bill to cover all rural Title I schools, including but not limited to Na'alehu Elementary School and defecting the date to July 1, 2050. Members, questions? Chair votes aye.
Recommendation, Senate Bill 2893, pass with amendments. Any member voting no? Any member voting with reservation? None? All five members voting aye, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. The last one on the agenda, Senate Bill 2862 relating to education appropriates funds to DOE to install air conditioning units for public school classrooms that have not received air conditioning units. Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments. We're going to blank out the appropriation, affect the date to July 1, 2050, and technical and non-substantive amendments. Questions, members? If not, Chair votes aye.
Recommendation, Senate Bill 2862, pass with amendments. Any members voting no? Any members voting reservations, hearing none? All five members voting aye, recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much, members. We have one more item. Okay, next agenda. This is for Senate Bill 2928 relating to education. There's a proposed SD1 establishes a working group to consider and prepare, to study and prepare an implementation plan for agriculture career pathways and report to the legislature, appropriates an unspecified amount of funds. The Senate Bill 2928, do we have any testifiers? Oh, sorry. Sorry. Okay. Senate Bill 2928. Senate Bill 2928, proposed SD1, pass with amendments to insert the proposed SD1 into this bill, recommitting this short-form bill back to this committee. Members, questions? Recommendation of the Chair is to pass with amendments.
Recommendation is to pass Senate Bill 2928 with amendments. Any member voting no? Any member with reservations, hearing none? Recommendations adopted.
Thank you, members. That concludes this Committee on Education.
Senator, go ahead.